The Lake Falls meeting order, please drive to the left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
This is Travoski, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Poser.
Here.
Dr. Lockland.
Here.
Mr. Morrell Music.
Here.
Mr. Pratka.
Here.
Mr. Repco.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. World D Music.
It's time to like turn it over for solicitors report. The board held an executive session prior to this evening's meeting at which legal issues were discussed specifically, the tax assessment appeal of Latrobe Steel. The board also briefly discussed and updated on negotiations with the PSEA. And we also discussed a student issue that has a successful outcome as well as a general question regarding foster care. And that's the end. Thank you. We're gonna move up the student activities and recreation, Mr. Pratka.
Yes, I'd like to recognize our 2023-2024 winner sports, PIAA state medalists. And big honor guys, congratulations. You guys will see I've been announcing. We're gonna hit wrestling first, Coach Mears. And I want to recognize Leo Joseph for taking eighth place at the PIAA state tournament at 114 pounds. Luke Willisheal, fifth place at 121 pounds. And Hunter Snyder, sixth place at 172 pounds. Wrestling is near and dear to my heart, that's what I did, so I'm proud of you guys. Awesome job. Girls swimming, just wanted to recognize the 200 free relay, eighth place Maggie Elder, Destiny Homan, Hannah Karasina, and Lauren Bell. Great job. Boys swimming, 240, seventh place Patrick Craddy. 200 free relay, fourth place would be Chris Hees, Patrick Craddy, Jace Petticone, and Charlie Thompson. And 400 free relay, sixth place, seven states, Patrick Craddy, Chris Hees, Jace Petticone, and Charlie Thompson. I wanted to turn it over to the coaches real quick if you want to make a brief comment. Coach Mears for wrestling?
Yes, thanks everybody, three state place winners actually had four Pennsylvania state qualifiers. I'm very proud of this young team. We wound up with the most state medals of any school in the WPL double layer tripway. We had three, no one else had more than two. Biggest thing I look forward to is these guys all return next year, they're all underclassmen. They're all also high honor or straight A students, which is probably the biggest thing at the end of the day. So we're very proud of our program, where we're at, they'll all three return to lead the way next year. So Luke's a free time state place winner. He does have a chance next year, I don't want to jinx him, so I don't know whether to talk about it or not. Latrobe never had a wrestler in the history of the program win four county titles, section titles, WPL titles, and four state medals. He can do all that next year, if God willing, and he's healthy and nothing happens. Leo is the brain trust of the team, he's now being recruited by some Ivy League schools, we know, so. I could never go there. And Hunter actually did something, he's a freshman, which means at 172 as a ninth grader, you're wrestling mostly juniors and seniors. I call it the high rep district, you know, they mostly have 150 experienced matches, that is 35 or so, and beat the number one ranked kid in the state in the quarterfinals. So Hunter's off to a good start too, so very proud of the program, where we're at, and we'll see what happens next year. See if we can't get Mr. Prunk to that ring he's been aching for.
Thanks. Thanks Coach. Greg Garikin, coach for the girls and boys. And boys, and boy, oh. So kind of like Mr. Mears, we're a young team, everyone's returning except one. Jace is gonna move on from his swimming college at Dickinson. But we've been every year improving and improving with the program. Almost everyone here swam at states last year, but we weren't here with us many medals last year, so they've improved. We have a lot of big goals next year, a lot of them want even more individual medals, but we're set up well. We're still young, we've got two, three sophores here, three juniors and one senior. So we should be several years continuing showing up here every April to give you guys some medals.
The more, the more the merrier. And we have plenty of seats, and if we have to move the auditorium, we'll do it. I knew that you were all outside, and I enjoyed when we recognized our state winners, because I could hear the clanking of the medals. And that's a sweet sound. I want to congratulate each of you for not only representing yourself at the state level, but for representing Greater Latrobe at that state level as well. Congratulations to all of you. Congratulations as you move on, Jace, and congratulations everybody, and good luck next year as you have the opportunity to come back in and do this again, and for some of you maybe again, and for some of you maybe again, and again. No, not again, that was five again, so we can't. But congratulations, if I could see, all of you, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, okay? That's the good news. But if I could see our athletes just on the other side before you go, I want to talk to you over, okay?
Can I just say something?
You can say anything you want.
Mr. Pratka, swimming's my sport.
Awesome.
These swimmers, I've seen them all swim, they're phenomenal. You should all watch.
I wrestled, I couldn't swim.
Well, they could really be impressed, because they take about four strokes from one end of the pool to the other. It's 25 yards. I'm not gonna tell you how many times, the strokes it takes me. It's such a pleasure to watch this team and to watch these athletes. They're, and I have a 10-year-old, 11-year-old grandson who's on the alcohol club. He can't say enough about you guys, because you're wonderful, incredible guys. And that just makes my heart happy. So thank you for everything you do, and for being so attentive.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Quick, not individual, the days, you're just a reminder, seeing how this sport went through all the classes. Straight sports, all of you listed, long ball track, three person ball class, girl's soccer, all those kinds of classes. Some of those things. All right, I'm nervous, I don't know what to say.
Thank you. Okay, so we're planning.
In the Greater Latro's Junior High School, as for academics, Friday, April 19th marks the mid-quarter for quarter four, and multiple students continue their home mass student of the month recognition for their growth and achievements throughout March, in addition to those earning recognition in previous months. Regarding the arts, Greater Latro's School District was recognized as the best communities for music education award from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for the fourth year in a row. This foundation recognizes the collective efforts that teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders have made so that music is a part of a well-rounded education for every child. Four students qualified for the PMEA Region One Band Festival held at Deer Lakes, and four students qualified for the PMEA Region One Choir Festival held at Mars High School. I want to extend my congratulations to some students who aren't here. Regina Zeza, who was qualified for the All-State Concert Band, and Jack Dixon, Nathan Chatura, and Abigail Wolfpack, who all qualified for the All-State Choir on stage. On April 23rd, the Senior High School Band Concert will take place at 7:00 PM, and on May 7th, the Senior High School Choir Concert will take place at 7:00. For athletics, I know Mr. Pratka said that the seniors are all listed. And then regarding career and future readiness, on Thursday, April 11th, is Bring Your Child to Work Day at Greater Latro's Elementary School, and this is led by our class officers. In the Junior High School, PSSAs will be underway, so on April 23rd through the 25th, there will be testing for ELA. On the 30th, there will be testing for math, and then on the 2nd, there will be testing for science, for a grade students only. And on May 2nd, there will be the Joint Junior High and Senior High School Jazz Concert in the Senior High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. In all three elementary schools, on April 10th, is due to be kindergarten family story night. On the 17th, is due to be kindergarten visitation. And then on the 22nd through the 26th, there will be ELA, PSSAs for grades three through six. On the 29th through May 2nd, there will be math PSSAs for grades three through six. And on May 2nd through the 3rd, there will be science PSSAs for grade four. In the Trump Elementary School, May 3rd is the grade six district Olympic Day. On the 8th is their art show, and on the 9th, the band chorus will have their concerts. In Mountview Elementary School, on April 3rd, there will be a choir concert at 7:00 PM. And then on the 17th, there will be a band concert for grades five and six at the Senior High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. Finally, in Bagley, there will be a choir concert at the Senior High School on April 4th at 7:00 PM for grades five and six. On the 13th, they have their spirit carnival, and finally, on the 6th, they have their art show. That was a lot, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Roll report, Mr. Mears.
Thank you very much, Mr. Repco. The roll report is attached, as usual, history, monthly update on kindergarten numbers. Right now, we are sitting at 190 registered. Last year this time, we were sitting at 175, so continuing with that plus 15 trend that I discussed last month. So 190 currently, I'm just, thank you very much. Just have a great 45 minutes. Every year at this time, we get to present new courses that our teachers and teacher leaders came up with. I'm always impressed with the quality of the courses they are able to come up with. They're always looking at what's going to be interesting for students, what's gonna help students, you know, in the long run once they leave us after high school. So I appreciate everybody being here to present. First off, from our Family and Consumer Science and Business Department is Mrs. Powell to talk about baking and pastries. Catch your breath.
I just literally jumped out of a car, and then somebody drove my car, so I'm having to find it at the end, wherever he dropped it off. But I apologize, I just came from a track meet, we won, so that was a good thing. I'm presenting baking and pastries, and it's a course that was highly talked about and requested from our students. We actually started talking about it a little bit last year. Started talking a little bit more actively this year about it because of the number of kids that requested a course like this. And what we saw that would fit for it was the kids who aren't attending EWCTC, but who have an interest in baking and pastries. So we decided to put it out there and see how much interest we had. It's a course that's going to really focus on some kitchen safety, and then roll into cakes, cookies, brownies, some pastries, pies, breads, things like that. I believe over 200 students have enrolled in the course. So it was a very popular pick with our Family and Consumer Science students. So foods is not going to be required to take baking and pastries. We have set the curriculum up so that they can cover the same kitchen safety that they would need to be able to function to take the class. So are there any questions?
You want to bring samples?
Sure. I won't be making them, so I'm sure they'll be good.
I know it's an electric push-up, is it open to?
It's actually gonna be open 9 through 12, so we're gonna have, we hope to have an exclusive ninth grade section, and then we'll also have some 10 through 12. Gonna have to do some playing around with our numbers, because we only have two, they're only exclusive for science teachers, and our numbers are high, so we'll see what it looks like. We have to, we may have to move some kids out, well, we are gonna have to move some kids out, but.
Do a good job with the ninth grade, it's hard to take a baby out of the classroom.
Okay, there you go.
Because we have grid shop.
Yes, we do. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, I know you don't have.
The track went. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
We won, we won big, so that was good. Mr. Evans for Physical Education is up next, thank you all very much.
I'm Tim Levens, I am the Health and PE Teacher Leader for K-12. This year, we are adding in three courses that tie together. They vertically align from 7th and 8th to 9th, 10th, and 11th, and 12th. What we see right now, athletic performance and health, that is for the ninth and 10th graders. We saw a need, as kids are getting more involved in sports, we found the need to be able to offer them health and physical education that isn't gonna impact them within their sport. You know, a lot of times, kids will have a game the day they're doing something very difficult or rigorous in phys ed class, and you get to a point where a kid wants to participate, but it's gonna hinder their performance. And we want to be able to give kids maximum ability to perform in their classroom as well as in their sport. So what we're offering is an opportunity for students to get all of their weight training, all of their speed agility, all of their plyometrics, everything that they would need to do for a sport, whether they're offseason, in-season, or just ending their season, within the eight-minute class period. This solves a lot of issues, number one, coaches no longer have to keep kids out of school and lift weights and practice. So kids are getting home in time to get some homework done, and be able to focus on other things that are important in life. So we're getting that done for them in school, within their classroom, and still taking care of their health and physical education credit. When kids take the class, they're basically getting their teacher as a personal trainer. So a class may have 20 kids in it, some may be in-season for football, they may be out-of-season for swimming. The kids who are in football, who are in-season, on the day of the game, they'll go through mobility, they'll go through warm-ups, they'll go through dynamics, things that will prepare them. We also monitor their nutrition, which is a big piece. All of us that teach the class are currently finishing a sports nutrition certification. It's different than a dietitian. We don't prescribe diets, but we help to make sure the kids are getting the right macronutrients, making sure they're getting the right amount of calories. We do pre- and post-event eating and nutrient timing, that is super important to any athlete. So they're getting that within the classroom, and we monitor that on a daily basis. Another thing that's really cool that no other school district is currently doing, at least in Westmoreland County, is within us helping them with their nutrition. We've partnered with Julian Berg in our food services, and we've also partnered with a local business band called Bar Clean Meals. And what they're gonna do is, within the cafeteria, let's say a student knows that they need to get 3500 calories in the day, they need so much protein, so many carbs, they can walk into the cafeteria, and there's gonna be a section where meals are labeled with protein, with carbs, so they don't have to think, they can just go in, pick what matches their numbers and eat. And as you know, anyone who's exercising and lifting weights, the pre-workout, the post-workout nutrition is also important, and our clean meals is gonna have a refrigerator in there with protein drinks and meals that are already ready for them, so that when we tell them what they need, whenever they're done lifting, they can literally go and grab it and be set up for success. The health component is only in ninth and 10th, because we always teach health to our ninth graders, so that in the ninth and 10th will also involve not just nutrition, but it will involve your drugs and alcohol and all the things that are important to get kids aware of at that age. Do you want to clip me forward to the next one? This is the same exact class, except this is 11th and 12th graders. They don't have the health component, but everything else is identical. We break them up in ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th, because the level of difficulty changes a little bit with some of the things they do. The ninth and 10th graders are more learning about form, technique, getting things correct, getting an understanding of how to eat, and how to move their body, control weights. In 11th and 12th, they should all be there, and we pushed them a little bit harder, and go for a little bit of a higher result. This class is not only gonna be something that's gonna help kids to get the maximum amount of their sport and out of their gym class, but you're gonna see kids change their bodies. And for so long, I've been here this is my 23rd year, and you see kids that lift weights year-round, and they always look the same. So they're putting in time, but they're not really getting the benefit. But us monitoring that, getting their nutrition right, having that lift in front of us, you're gonna see kids change. I like to use an example, Kyle McNeil is related to someone in here. He was injured earlier in the year. He came to me, and he was concerned with his injury, he was out of basketball season, and he really wanted to try and put on muscle. And he's one of the kids that he's out of the class, he's another one. But Kyle came in, without being able to lift, he wasn't where he wanted to be as far as what he weighed. We put him on a nutrition plan, and we put him on a workout, and he checked in every single week. And he went from someone who already did workout and didn't see great results. He was someone who his parents were on top of making his food, checking in. He put on 23 pounds over 12 weeks and 0% body fat was that. So he got stronger, he changed his body, and that's what we hope to do for all 320 kids who take the class. So that's where we're sitting at right now, 320 for the ninth and 10th, and about 180 for the 11th and 12th. So we have a huge number of kids taking, and we hope to have a huge impact, not only on them as an individual, but on our sports teams. The last class, and this is for the 7th and 8th, the best way to get kids interested as they move up is to catch them when they're young. This is the age where a lot of kids' bodies are changing, they can take advantage of growth, they can take advantage of the things that happen when they're going through puberty, that you can start adding muscle, when you can start taking them through multi-story exercises and movements. So this Raise the Bars class, when they're in 7th and 8th grade, they'll get introduced to everything that we do when they're in ninth and 10th. We have a cool room being set up where it's using the Peloton app to show them all different types of exercise that they can do in group. There's gonna be another group set up where they're just learning form on squats, deadlift, bench, Olympic moves, but with minimal weight using bands and things that can be modified. So when they leave this class, they're gonna have an understanding in fitness, they're gonna have a path that they're interested in, and they should be ready to come to us and be able to move forward pretty quickly. So quick overview, the Raise the Bars for 7th and 8th, that's an intro class. Ninth and 10th steps up a little bit, includes nutrition, and then in 11th and 12th, they should be ready to get on it all. Any questions?
So Tim, just to be clear, the 9th through 10th, or 12th grade class, they can take this class in place of whatever regular schedule.
Correct.
This has been something I've begged for for years, I'm thrilled to see this.
It was.
Because to have our athletes going into, you know, football kids swimming.
Right.
You know, it just, they're already on the field, they're already exercising more than the average person anyway, and then to demand that they go to a PE class that doesn't suit them.
Yeah, this makes it.
This makes so much more.
And it is still offered to the regular population, that's a question that we got. The regular students can take this, it's called weight training and nutrition. The only difference is they follow a set curriculum. Since they're not playing a sport, they all bench on the same day, they all do squats on the same day, because we don't have to plan it around our sport. So everyone is able to take this, we just separated the athletes so we can make it specific to their sport needs.
Nice, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Evans, Mr. Thomas is wondering, can you take the athletic performance part?
Absolutely, absolutely. Next one is Jayden Caden. Jayden is our aerospace teacher of high school, along as well being a physics teacher.
Hello, come on. So I'm actually gonna be talking to tonight about a curriculum that we are looking to adopt at the high school. In place of, currently we have an aerospace engineering course, but what we're looking to do is transition over into this curriculum that was designed and written by AOPA, which is an organization that is created from pilots and aircraft owners in order to try and get more students into the aviation field. Right now, the current industry is at a great lead for any career field that you could possibly imagine in the aviation industry. So through these courses that we're looking to bring into the high school level, they would get a chance to touch on numerous different avenues that they could potentially explore as a career, as well as hopefully offer them the option to dive into either drone flights or potentially becoming a pilot as well. So in ninth grade, what this course would look like, it would actually be taught as a portion of the introduction to engineering course. So they would actually have a unit dedicated to aviation, where the students would get a chance to just lightly scratch the surface on what is aviation, what kind of aerospace engineering they could do with that, some different unmanned systems, as well as looking into different careers that would be possible. So this would take place at the ninth grade level. And then also, next year, we're looking to integrate this. It is a 10th grade course where it's labeled as such in the AOPA curriculum. However, AOPA is very willing to allow us to be as flexible as we want with their curriculum, to utilize different portions of it, and incorporate students at any different level for what we see fit for this course. So this would kind of be the second level after that ninth grade intro and the intro of engineering class. In this 10th grade course, which is actually open to 10th through 12th graders, it's just the next level, so they have that level as 10th grade, but we're calling it the forces of flights, or sorry, forces of flight and systems. So this incorporates the four different forces that occur on an aircraft, and it would help them analyze and calculate with those forces, as well as learn about the different systems that are involved in aircraft, whether that be the engine, looking at the actual construction of the aircraft, so any different systems that you'll commit, electrical systems. So this would be the course that we would involve next year, would be 10th through 12th grade. After that, there are two more courses in the AOPA curriculum. We're hoping to add the 11th grade, and this would just be the course that falls. So if you took the 10th grade course as a junior, you would then potentially be able to take this 11th grade course as a senior. So it's very flexible, it just follows that chain. And the 11th grade course, this is actually where, in the first semester, it applies for both pathway options, whether it's human flight or drone flight. But the first semester would prepare the students to actually be able to take the FAA test that would lead them towards either getting their pilot license, if that's the direction they so chose, or actually getting their Part 107, which is a license that allows the operator to make money from their drone flights. So they would study and be able to take that test after that first semester. And then semester two is where we would potentially look to have a split, so that students that would be more interested in manned flight, getting their actual pilot's license, whether it be private or commercial, they would go into that course, or there's the UAS unmanned systems where students would take that semester if they wanted to go on the drone flights. And AOPA is a, and yes, you can see here kind of the breakdown of how they have structured their course load. So the ninth and the 10th, there's what I was addressing first, and then that's where it splits. But in that grade 11 course, it is the same first semester that would take, and then second semester is where they would break off. And there is an option to add even a grade 12 course, if there is a need and desire from the students that we could look into beyond that. AOPA is a, like I said, fantastic foundation or organization. Actually have the opportunity to go and get training through a lot of their organizers, and they are just beyond enthusiastic about bringing aviation into the high schools, getting students interested. And they are offering training, course-specific training, that is virtual. They also have round-the-clock assistance, so if we as teachers need more information beyond what we're provided in the lesson plans that are already created for us, they're willing to have conversations in terms of clarifying anything that we would maybe then have concerns with. So it's a fantastic program, organization, and a really well-built curriculum on top of that. I'm thrilled about that, so are there any questions that I can answer?
No prerequisites for that.
No, there are no prerequisites for it. So again, I feel like we're just looking to get the services scratched in that ninth grade course, coming up, the history of, and then through that, by the time you would get to the 10th grade course, whether in 10th grade or above, the math level would be building right alongside that, that means, yeah. Any other questions?
Are you gonna get your license?
I am actually looking to get my license. I have taken grad school over at, we have a local aviation school over at our airport, and AOPA actually offers a lot of scholarships to both students. So AOPA is a membership that you can join, so it's free to all high school students, so they can join the AOPA without any cost. Since I am instructing the course, I get a free teacher membership, and they also offer both teachers scholarships to get their pilot's license, as well as students. both teacher scholarships to get their pilot license, as well as students can apply for scholarships as well. So that is, that is my hope.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very excited about it. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jayden. And just to be clear, so next week we'll be voting to approve the Grade Nine course and the Grade Ten course. Then the following year will be phasing in Grade Eleven and Grade Twelve. Grade Nine is being implemented into it being phased into the Introduction to Engineering class. Grade Ten, Jay, we will be teaching that. And this ties along, if you remember last year, we signed a partnership with CCBC, the Community College of Beaker County. That's, and it's two totally separate entities. The CCBC program, juniors, that program's for juniors and seniors. If you start with the program your junior year, you can earn up to 28 credits for airport management or to be an air traffic controller. You spend half your day taking courses with Greater Metro. The other half, you're joining synchronously with CCBC. The only downfall of that program, it's expensive. It is, I don't, I think it's around $800 per course for the student. And this, this will be, and we're looking at some enrollment opportunities here, potentially with St. Ed's College, which that cost would be drastically lower than $800. Next up, Mr. Rickert.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Rickert. I'm here to present the Honors Chemistry Class. Starting next year at the senior high, the goal is to have two levels of chemistry. An academic chemistry course, which is essentially our current course, and the more challenging Honors Chemistry class. The goal of the Honors Chemistry class is to increase the rigor for our more advanced students. It's going to be especially beneficial for those students who may be moving on to our AP Chemistry class the following year, or just a student who is taking a science major in college. Both classes, the academic and honors chemistry, will teach generally the same topics. The difference will be that the honors class will teach those topics a little faster and in greater detail. There will be more substantial, more involved math back calculations that the students will have to do. Students will also be expected to write formal lab reports. So in addition to teaching more chemistry content, we're really hoping to provide additional reinforcement for the math and writing skills for the students in that class. But both classes are going to be a great class. If you take a look at the screen at the bottom, you'll see that the class is weighted just very slightly. So whereas a student in a typical class earning an A would earn four points towards their GPA, a student taking the honors chemistry would earn 4.25. So it's not a big difference, but we're hoping that a little bit of weight to the grade is going to encourage our more advanced students to challenge themselves and to take the honors chemistry class. What we don't want to happen is, you know, a really advanced student taking the academic chemistry just to avoid some work. It's going to be a great class, the academic chemistry, for a lot of students, but maybe not for our most advanced students. I know I didn't have quite as much to say. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our new courses. There's just some name changes and these are attached on the agenda. No curriculum changes here. It's just solely name changes. And there's one from the junior high, which is also on your agenda. Hero Me becomes creative writer. Any questions? I think every year at this time, at this point, we say, I wish we could go back and be a student at this time to take some of these classes. And that's just a true testament to what our teachers are doing in designing for our kids, preparing them for life out of the next school. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meigs. Next week, we want to ask you to approve new courses that were just the name changes that Mr. Meigs presented there. We have to approve college and high school both credentialed agreement between Seaton Hill University and Greater Lake Grove Senior High School for the next school year. We're going to ask to approve a memorandum of understanding between Greater Lake Grove School District and Private Industry Council, Westmoreland Fayette, operating pre-K counts at Lake Grove Elementary School, which commences on the 1st. Ask to approve a memorandum of understanding between Greater Lake Grove School District and Ligonier Valley Learning Center, operating pre-K counts programs at Bagley Elementary School. Memorandum of understanding between Greater Lake Grove District and Ligonier Valley Learning Center for the Pre-K Counts Program at Mountain View Elementary. We're going to ask to approve Dr. Robert Kenner Charter School Agreement for 2024-2025 school year and approve tuition students as listed. And that concludes my report. Might I ask Mr. Muzie?
Thank you. The Treasury Report is attached to the board's agenda. Payman Bills is attached to the board's agenda. Next week, we'll approve the disposal of a property which is 1995 Chevrolet GP 3500 bus truck. And that's attached to the board's agenda. The finance committee meeting minutes from March 20th are attached. And the next finance committee meeting date will be on May 14th at 5:30 at this.
Thank you, Mr. Muzie. Facilities operation planning, Mr. Goffin.
Thank you, Mr. Raffel. Next week, we'll ask the board to award bids for 24-25 school year. Lives, all the attachments are listed. Also would ask next week, award fall score equipment supply bid for 24-25 school year. And the attached is for the facilities operations committee committee from April 3rd of last week. And the next facilities operations planning committee meeting is Wednesday, May 4:30. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Goffin. Unity relations, Mr. Urban.
Okay, Greater Lake Grove reports a recreation commission meeting minutes February 15th, 2024, at the same time. And next year, Greater Lake Grove reports a recreation commission meeting Thursday, 2024, 4:00, at Lake Grove, Mrs. Blythe. And nothing to report this time.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, Mr. Cullen?
Thank you. So next week, we'll be asking for approval for the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget for July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. This was reviewed by Dan in our finance committee meeting. Also, we'll be asking to report the multi-purpose paper bid for the WIU Consortium. And then lastly, the summary of the WIU Board Meeting Minutes and Executive Direction Report is attached for the meeting on, from March 26th. The next WIU Committee Meeting will be held at Tuesday, April 23rd at 7:00 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Dress station. No report this evening. Mr. Gazar, EWCTC?
Thank you, Mr. Raffel. Next week, we'll approve the EWCTC's operating budget, which is an attachment to your agenda this evening. And it has been reviewed by both Mr. Frank and Mr. Wiseman. If you have any questions about it, you can ask them. This is a big one. Our senior recognition for EWCTC seniors will be May 21st at the, our senior high auditorium at 7:00 P.M. It's a really nice event.
It is. But I just wanted to mention too, if you look at that date, that's the date of our second meeting in May. And I did talk to. Yeah, it's interesting. It's because of where May 1st fell this year. Last year, they were able to have it in that same week because our meetings were all one week earlier because the 1st of May was Tuesday on Wednesday.
Right.
So I did talk to Mr. Weimer and he's looking at different dates because I think it's important that our JOC members are able to attend if possible.
Yeah, I'm going to lab. I'm not.
Right, so.
I love you guys.
Obviously, I would like to attend as well, just depending on record, but he is looking at perhaps changing that date to a different day that week. Just sorry.
I think he's chose the 20th.
Did?
Okay.
I had to talk to him this morning and he hadn't had a different date, so, okay.
Oh, no, it's finalized. That's the last thing we discussed. Sorry.
Yeah, the 20th is Monday.
There's also the attachment of our previous meeting in March 27th for the Joint Operating Committee Meeting. And our next one will be April 24th at 7:00 P.M. And that concludes my report. And I have no calls.
Thank you, Mr. Gazar. For technology, we're going to award service agreement for Ethernet point to point line next week. And superintendent.
Next week, I'll ask the board to grant permission for us to realign staff, our newer board members. This is done annually. It just allows us to move people from grade level to grade level or subject to subject if we need to for purposes of enrollment. We'll approve three resignations, a retirement, a regular resignation for personal reasons. And Melissa McClain is resigning. Melissa, a teacher at Bagley Elementary, she's been an instructional coach and she just got hired at Derry Area to be an elementary school principal. We'll approve professional personnel, substitute teachers as listed. We'll have some retroactive long-term substitute teachers being approved onto bachelor step one. Summer support personnel as listed. We will hopefully have a name as our new cheerleading coach and we have a volunteer football coach listed under Support Personnel Supplemental. We will approve Josh Jordan as a pro-rated teacher leader in music K-12 when Kelsey Cotten took a principal's position at Ligonier. She was our teacher leader K-12 music, so Josh is going to step in and finish the year out, so he'll just get the appropriated portion of her teacher leader pay. Other business, prom is coming up Friday, May 10th. That's also an active day. The awards assembly is Thursday, May 23rd at 8:00 AM in the auditorium. The school walk is Friday, May 24th. Mr. Meigs, briefly, what's the school walk?
So our seniors go through and they walk through the junior high, they go back to the elementary school that they attended and get to watch through there. It is a really, really cool experience if you're available to come see it about 1:15 to 1:30 on that day.
They do it in their caps and gloves.
They wear their caps and gloves, which is the best part.
Memorial Day, no school, obviously, and then we get into graduation. Bachelor of Area Service Wednesday, May 29th. The last day of instruction is a half-day that's on the 30th. And graduation hopefully that same day unless it rains, in which case we go to Friday. I did want to note one other thing. We have three students, we have four students from Greater Lake Grove participating in Skills USA. That's through EWCTC. Three of those students that participated earned either the first or third place. Summer public earned third place. Skills USA, that's statewide competition, third place in baking and pastry products. She won before, right?
Yep.
At Skills USA?
Yep, she won last year. These are, yeah, these are like, like he was talking about the kids being underclass enough and being able to do this over and over. Same thing happens in these places.
And then we had Robbie Phillips and Keegan Powell, both in Digital Cinema, earned first place. State learners will recognize those students here as well, but I just want you to know now, they moved on from the state competition to the national competition, which is in Atlanta, which is huge. Happened at EWCTC on Friday and they had the awards presentation live streaming on the TVs and it was like watching the Academy Awards. Board meeting dates, we have a meeting next week here on the 16th in the CSC. And then our May meetings are listed. Mr. Vice President, complete my report.
Reader.